All right. Good evening, everybody. It is seven o'clock and we are getting ready to get started. First thing we'll do is a call to order roll call.
Counselor Williams is excused absent. Counselor Hansi.
Here.
Counselor Perser.
Here.
Counselor Parrish.
Present.
Counselor Downs.
Here.
And Counselor Miller.
And.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm going to ask that everybody stand for a moment of silence to collect your thoughts, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have an agenda set forth before us. Are there any changes to the agenda, Deb?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have a change to the consent agenda. There is an addition of the city manager's resignation, so it will be the council's acceptance of that.
Right. Thank you. Any questions on the agenda? Need a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as adopted.
Second.
For a second.
Counselor Hansi. Counselor Perser. Counselor Parrish.
Yes.
Counselor Downs. Counselor Miller. Motion passes five zero.
Great. Thank you. Before we get into proclamations and presentations, I just want to make a quick note that for those that may follow this Uber closely, there is a slight change to the format of the agenda, which is we now have public participation and the consent agenda, public participation combined into one section. So if you would like to speak publicly, just please note that those two sections are now combined. And we've made some changes to public hearing and action items, just that they are all kind of in one group and not necessarily in a particular order. That allows us to do things like certain land use issues in the proper order without having to make adjustments along the way. So those are the big changes there. But let's get to the fun stuff. So this is what we, this is the fun stuff that we get to do. We have some, I think we have, judging by the crowd, maybe some students, some parents, maybe a couple of teachers here. Is that correct? Really? Thank you. This is gonna, we need a little bit more enthusiasm. Thank you. So I'm going to ask that all of counsel come up. We'll grab a microphone and we're each going to recognize a student or a teacher of the month at Shellity, and then we will ask Kami Kidd to come up as well. So Amy, you are going to lead us off. Let's get a microphone.
Okay, I have Mr. Kane Fournier and Avery Meyer. Thank you, guys. These are our kindergarten. And if you'll just stay right here, we're gonna have a, grab a picture afterwards. Here, you guys get a treat and a button, and there's a day pass for the rec center on your certificate, all kinds of good stuff. And I have Mason Holmes, second grade.
And we want to recognize Easton Stewart, third grade.
Well. Get some other things here, too. Okay, think you can handle all of those. You get to turn around. Yes.
Janine?
Yep. I have Levi Bray of fourth grade. Come on up. And just a special note, yeah. Congratulations.
I have an award for fifth grade individual, Ashland Minnell. Come on up.
All right. I get to announce the teachers and I have some bad news for the teachers, which is I don't have chocolate for you guys. So I'm sorry. All right, fourth, next I'd like to recognize the fourth grade teacher. We have Ms. Sarah Hill. Please come up. And last, but certainly not least, we have Shelley Dix. Please come on up. Thank you very much. So everybody received, also received a day pass to the rec center as well as a button. And everybody but the teachers got some chocolate. So why don't we all kind of crowd in? So now's the time to take pictures once we get together. And then parents, get out of your seats. Come on up. Don't be shy. Not done yet. There any, I think a couple more parents. All right, great. Let's give them all another round of applause. Thank you all. All right. Ms. Kidd, would you like to come up and say a few words? As I steal the microphone? Oh, yeah. Please step up to the microphone and.
Get your name where you live.
Yeah.
I didn't plan anything to talk about, but we would just really appreciate your recognizing the Shellity students. Each of the kids were, we have kindergarten through fifth grade, were nominated by all of their teachers. And so we get to choose just one from each grade level. So that speaks volumes about the kids that we got to choose. And then the staff members were nominated by their colleagues and peers as well. So thank you. Thank you for doing this. And thanks, everybody, for coming. That's awesome.
Thank you, guys. All right. We have a couple more proclamations and presentations. Next up is proclaiming November 2024 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month. And Janine, would you like to read that, please?
Would. Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer death among men and women in the United States and Colorado, accounting for more deaths than colon, breast, and prostate cancers combined. And whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control, there were 506 new lung cancer cases between 2017 and 2021, and 303 deaths due to lung cancer between 2018 and 2022 in Mesa County. And whereas the five-year survival rate for localized lung cancer is 60%, but only 24% of cases are diagnosed at this early stage. And whereas lung cancer screening for high-risk individuals using low-dose computed tomography reduces mortality by 20% compared to chest x-rays, with 24% reduction in men and 33% in women, as shown by large trials. And whereas funding for lung cancer research lags behind other cancers, and more research is needed in early diagnosis, screening, and treatment, particularly for women and minority populations. And whereas lung cancer incidence is decreasing twice as fast in men as in women, and by 2035, more women will die from lung cancer than men. And whereas African Americans have the highest incidence and mortality rates of lung cancer, with disparities in screening, diagnosis, and treatment seen across minority populations. And whereas lung cancer in individuals who never smoked is the seventh-leading cause of cancer-related deaths, causing 17,000 to 26,000 deaths annually in the U.S., with 60 to 70% of cases among women. And whereas radon is the leading cause of lung cancer among non-smokers and the second-leading cause overall. And whereas stigma surrounding lung cancer hinders early diagnosis, treatment, and funding for research negatively affects patients' quality of life and awareness of risk factors other than smoking. And whereas breakthroughs in lung cancer research are identifying genetic markers and developing new treatments, including immunotherapies and targeted therapies. And whereas organizations like the American Lung Cancer Screening Initiative and Women's Lung Cancer Forum are committed to educating and increasing screening rates in Colorado. Therefore, we, the Fruta City Council, on behalf of Mayor Matthew Bremen, proclaim November 2024 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Fruta, Colorado, and recognize the need for research in lung cancer affecting women and health disparities, encouraging all citizens to learn about early detection through lung cancer screening.
Thank you very much. And do we have somebody online? Right. I'm just going to apologize now if I mispronounce your name. But to accept this online is C S U F Chapter President Mohammed Mosseini. Hopefully I said that right. With the American Lung Cancer Screening Initiative.
Everyone, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, thanks so much for introducing this and again for proclaiming November as Lung Cancer Screening, Lung Cancer Awareness Month. Again, as you mentioned, my name's Mohammed Mosseini. I'm the Cal State Fullerton President, Chapter President. And I want to again thank you all for this proclamation. As mentioned in the proclamation, lung cancer remains the leading cause of cancer death worldwide, claiming more lives than breast cancer, colon cancer, and prostate cancer combined. And surprisingly, around 20% of those who die of lung cancer have never actually smoked, showing that the disease actually can affect anybody essentially with lungs. So again, thanks so much for this proclamation and Cal State Fullerton, LC really does appreciate you guys.
Well, thank you for being here as well. All right. So thank you once again, Janine, for reading that. Next up, we have another proclamation proclaiming Monday, November 11th, 2024, as Veterans Day in the city of Fruta. Andrea, will you kindly read that proclamation?
Two. Whereas honorable service performed in the defense of our nation and her cause in time of war is the highest form of citizenship. And whereas the men and women who have served in the armed forces of the United States of America have made major contributions toward the preservation of the freedom of this nation and her people. And whereas the services performed by these millions of gallant Americans have demonstrated the willingness of our nation to meet the challenges of those wishing to subjugate individual determination through armed conflict. And whereas the nation and the free world are eternally grateful for the contributions of American veterans, men and women, to the advancement of the cause of an honorable world peace. And whereas for many, that sacrifice has ended in permanent injury or death, yet their spirit remains in the continued preservation of our freedoms and the promise of liberty established as an example for all the oppressed persons of the world. And now therefore, the city of Fruta City Council calls upon all citizens to observe Monday, November 11th, 2024, with appropriate ceremonies in honor of those who have served to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy.
Right. Thank you very much, Andrea. And I believe we have, I know we have him here because I saw him. American Legion Post 2006 Commander KJ Klein. Would you kindly come up and speak a few words and then, Andrea, we'll do that and then.
Oh. Okay, okay. All right.
Wait till you have.
I'll wait.
Thank you, City Council, Mr. Mayor. Really appreciate the recognition. It is imperative that we continue to honor our veterans and the sacrifices that they make to maintain our freedoms. And no better reminder than election night, which I'm sure we're all ready for tomorrow. I would like to invite everybody to come and place flags with us on veterans' graves at New Elmwood Cemetery on Friday, November 8th at 9:00 a.m. There's about 400 graves that we post flags on and leave them up to honor those that have served. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So next on our proclamation and presentation, we have a presentation for the 2024 American Public Works Association, APWA, Colorado Chapter Small Community Sustainability Project Award for the city of Fruta. And for the Public Works Department with the H2S Mitigation Project. And Bill Wolf, please tell me you're here. All right. Hopefully, Bill, they told you you're going to come up and speak and introduce everybody. Kimberly's gonna do it? Totally said you were gonna do it.
Kimberly loves presenting.
So if you want to step up to the mic, kind of give a brief overview, and I think you're going to introduce some other people.
Yeah, we'll get that out of the way first. We have Lynn Reynolds right here. And looks like the.
Some of those school kids.
Smart boy man. Okay. We have Jamie Richardson. Or, yeah, Richardson. We have Kevin DeLonge. We just know him as Jamie. I'm sorry. And way in the back there is Troy Melroy. That's our utility crew, basically.
Just to give you guys a forewarning, you will be coming forward for a photo, just so you know.
All right. We've been chasing our butts, pardon the expression, trying to figure out the H2S problems with these lines for a long time. I was told by the gentleman who passed away, he used to run our jetter, that he knew about it probably around 2010. I came along about 2014-ish, early on, and running the TV camera and had to take some pictures. And we tried a lot of different things. We tried high, high percentage chlorine, feeding that in. I had a gentleman with some ion device came in. He said he just didn't really think it was going to work. He was pretty honest about it, and that one didn't do much. The chlorine did something, but also probably helped wipe out some of the bugs. And also, I forgot, there's Matt Hayley back here. He's the, he's our new head of the wastewater treatment plant. So he was involved in this, too. Sorry, Matt. So anyhow, chased it around a number of years, trying a whole bunch of different things. Finally, our utility crew basically did the preliminaries. We went out hydro excavated down around all these manholes, the 17 manholes. And that were, H2S, if you don't know, eats concrete, eats iron, like the big old manhole lids and covers and rings. Eats just about everything, so. Except for the big PVC pipe. And so anyhow, a lot of bad manholes that look like they could fall in at any time. And quite honestly, I guess I showed up in the right period of history or whatever for this because we had some really excellent cooperation with all of our contractors. And So Phelps, MA Concrete, those guys did excellent job. And everything worked out really, really good. So we were just there to kind of like make the potholes, so engineering staff and also MA could do the measure downs and get the proper things ordered. So I guess we're just lucky to be here tonight. So take all the credit.
Great. Thank you. Everybody that was mentioned, please come forward to accept this public works project award for sustainability in small community, for small community. Come on up.
Yeah.
Right? I'll sneak out.
I'm shocked. All right, we have one more, so. All right. So our last is not necessarily a formal presentation, but it's a recognition for the Colorado Municipal Judges Association. Every other year votes for the leadership, votes for the Administrator of the Year. And this year, our very own Mamie Alsop One, and okay, okay, sorry. Now, I was told ahead of time that absolutely no way you were going to come up and speak. So, but we wanted to do a formal recognition of the work and for the dedication. So she serves as both a clerk and administrator. Her work over the last several years has moved the court to an organized, efficient, and high-performing part of the city of Fruta. This has been in no small feature, a reflection of Mamie's conscious commitment to excellence and innovation. For example, on her own initiative, she researched and identified software that result in a paperless system for the court. And it will be implemented or is being implemented this month. She is known among her colleagues as a consistent, incredible source of information, which is no small feat. And most impressive is her demeanor, which makes her a pleasure for the public to deal with. Often clerks must deal with a variety of personalities, some of which are, may not necessarily be polite. So she treats everyone with respect, patience, and kindness and courtesy, regardless of how they relate to her. These qualities are enviable to anyone who must interact with the public and shine the best light on our course. So thank you very, very much for your work and your service to the courts, and congratulations on the award. And I will keep my word unless you really want to come up and speak, but I'll keep my word. Yeah, definitely a photo.
Yeah.
And the room clears out. Okay. So next up on the agenda is that combined section of public participation, where if anybody has anything that they'd like to talk about, anything that's not on the consent agenda, or if there's anything you'd like to talk about on the consent agenda, now would be your time to do so. We, I asked that, or we asked that everybody comes up, state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Is there anybody that would like to participate? All right, seeing none, I will close public participation and move it back to the consent agenda. Members of the council may ask that any item be removed from the consent section and fully discussed. All items not removed from the consent section will then be approved. And as a reminder, a member of the council may vote no on any specific item without being asked that they be removed from the consent section for full discussion. And any items that we move off of consent will then be placed at the end of the consent agenda. With that, any questions or comments on anything on the consent agenda?
It's a whole lot of minutes.
Yes.
What a minutes.
All right. Anything? All right. Hearing none can get a motion to approve.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
All right, we have a first and second. Any questions? Last minute comments? All right, hearing none, please poll counsel. You can do it kindly.
Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Parrish.
Yes.
Counselor Downs.
Yes.
Counselor Miller. Counselor Hansi. Motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you. So next we're up to our public hearing and action items section. We have one item on it, which is a quasi judicial public hearing, change of location of a retail liquor store liquor license. And Deb, as we'll present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, City Council. Deb Woods, city clerk, interim city clerk for the city of Fruta. Tonight I'm presenting a change of location for a retail liquor store for Best Boys LLC, doing business as Fruta Liquor Mart. On September 20th, 2024, Fruta Liquor Mart, located at 423 Highway 650, submitted an application, supporting documents and fees for a change of location on their retail liquor store license to 733 Highway 650. Pursuant to CRS Section 443-311, upon receipt of an application for a change of location, the local licensing authority shall schedule a public hearing no less than 30 days from the date of the application and shall post and publish the public notice thereof not less than 10 days prior to the hearing. The public hearing notice was posted by the applicant at their current location on October 21st and noticed was published in the Daily Sentinel by staff on October 26th for the public hearing tonight. Preliminary findings of fact were issued and submitted to the applicant on October 21st and are included in the council packet. Pursuant to CRS Section 443-311, each application for a change of location shall state the reason for such change, which has been stated by the applicant as a need for more retail space and in order to incorporate a drive-through at the new location, which is owned by the applicant. In addition, the statute directs that the local licensing authority shall consider the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood and desires of the adult inhabitants in making a determination on a change of location. To support this, the applicant hired alcohol petitioning services to conduct a neighborhood survey of residents and businesses within a defined neighborhood in Fruta and report on the results of the survey. This survey is also included in your council packet and was signed by 14 Fruta businesses and 21 residents for a total of 35 signatures. All but one were in favor of the change of location, with the one person in opposition citing the reason that they don't drink alcohol. On May 1st, 2024, an employee of Fruta Liquor Mart permitted the selling of an alcohol beverage to a 16-year-old liquor enforcement division underage purchaser without verifying that the consumer was at least 21 years of age. A copy of a stipulation agreement and order is also included in your council packet. The owner of Fruta Liquor Mart filed a written petition to the liquor enforcement division requesting that they be allowed to pay a fine in lieu of suspension and that the division give further consideration for Fruta Liquor Mart qualifying as a responsible vendor. As part of their petition, Fruta Liquor Mart provided the liquor enforcement division with 15 valid responsible alcohol server training certificates earned by their employees after the owner of the liquor store hired and continues to hire a private company called ABT to provide the training. ABT has also conducted and continues to conduct biweekly compliance checks of their employees to ensure that they are abiding by Colorado liquor laws. The LED agreed, that's liquor enforcement division, it's just easier to say LED. The LED agreed that Fruta Liquor Mart is and has been proactive in trying to prevent violations from occurring. In the K of the May 1st violation, it was that employee's second day on the job whose supervisor stepped away for a brief moment. It was also the first and only violation Fruta Liquor Mart has received in its 14 years of being in business in Fruta. The LED agreed that Fruta Liquor Mart is a responsible vendor and accepted a fine in lieu of suspension The LED agreed that Fruta Liquor Mart is a responsible vendor and accepted a fine in lieu of suspension of the store's liquor license with all three days of the suspension permanently stayed, meaning that the suspension would essentially never go into effect. According to state statute, retail liquor stores may not open a new or move an existing liquor store to within 1,500 feet of another existing liquor store as a means of avoiding an undue concentration of liquor stores. The city's engineering project manager, Chris Damel, measured the distance between the new location of Fruta Liquor Mart and the closest existing store, which is in the middle liquors, and the distance was measured at 1,850 feet. Because the state's distance measurement requirement is met and the applicant's survey demonstrates that at least 97.1% of survey respondents support the application for a change of location, staff recommends that the city council approve the application for Fruta Liquor Mart to move from 423 Highway 650 to 733 Highway 650. Pursuant to state statute, once an application has been approved by the state and local licensing authorities, Fruta Liquor Mart will have three years after approval is granted to change the location of its premises. The owner of Fruta Liquor Mart, Alex Vatt, is here, present in the audience tonight, as is Brian Turner, who is the owner of Alcohol Petitioning Services and Alcohol Beverage Training. First, I'll extend an invitation to Alex to address the council if there's anything you'd like to add. Is there anything you'd like to add, Alex? Okay. I thought I'd give you a chance. And Brian has made himself available tonight in case the council has any questions or needs more information about his services, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Deb. So Alex or Brian, just to be clear, you don't wish to get up and say anything at this time? Okay, so with that, we're going to open it up to public comment. All right.
Oh, many publics.
Seeing none, I think we're going to close public comment and bring it back to staff, if we have any, or council whether. We have any questions, comments, concerns? All right. With that, we would need a motion.
I move to approve the change of location on a retail liquor store liquor license for the Best Boys LLC DBA Fruta Liquor Mart, currently located at 423 Highway 650 to 733 Highway 650.
The first?
Second.
The first and second, any other questions or comments? All right. Do you please?
Counselor Parrish?
Yes.
Counselor Downs? Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Hansi? And Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen, for being here.
Congrats on the expansion.
Yeah, congrats.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay.
Welcome.
There's no more public participation, but you could, Joe, if you wanted to.
Only.
Yeah, as they run.
All right. So we have one item on the administrative agenda tonight, which is a 2025 budget presentation. Quality of place, community wellness, and personal employee retention presentation by our assistant city manager, Shannon Bassam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, for the opportunity to present. Tonight's budget presentation is focusing on quality of place and personnel as some of our strategic outcome areas in our last strategic plan, and today we'll be discussing Fruta Parks and Recreation in the general fund, the Fruta Community Center Fund, our police department, and also just our personnel and retention efforts for our employees as a whole. All right, let me stop sharing real quick and reshare. It's having, wasn't displaying the PowerPoint.
We can see. You see your screen?
On our side?
Yeah, I see, it's not letting me, oh. I know, I apologize about that. Sorry, I launched it and I couldn't see it, so we might just go, maybe. Oh, we're having some Zoom issues, we should talk to that IT person. I'll just go through each, each one individually. So as I was saying, just for the record, tonight is the fourth of six formal presentations on the 2025 budget. We initially presented the 2025 budget at our workshop in September to the council. At our second meeting in October, we talked about our enterprise funds, our Public Works General Fund, and then also our large capital projects. We had a brief discussion at our last workshop, just talking about outside agency funding requests, and of course, answering any questions or concerns from the council. And so we have three more kind of formal check-ins, and tonight is the first one on that one, and then we'll have kind of a wrap-up economic health and development and the first public hearing on the 19th, and then budget will be set for adoption on December 3rd. Just one quick note, since this is a deviation from our original budget calendar, we did move our workshop to 5:30 on November 19th instead of on Thanksgiving. I think we're all very supportive of that. So any final items will be addressed on the 19th as compared to the 26th. Jumping right in, going to start off with the Fruta Community Center Fund. As this group knows, the Fruta Community Center Fund is funded through a mixture of sales tax and also user fees. City of Fruta, on all goods and services are subject to sales tax, levies a 3% sales tax. 2% of that goes to the general fund for normal government services, like our police department, our parks and recreation, public works, road maintenance, et cetera. And the other 1% goes to our community center fund to help with maintenance, debt service, and capital projects. Through October, we've actually had a very busy year at the community center. We've had 171,000 visits, which is an 8% increase from 2023. And if I'm remembering correctly, this could be our busiest year as far as participation. And yeah, seeing that overall, and even with maintenance week, we're still up 8% so far this year. So excited to see where we end up at the year end. Revenues for the Fruta Community Center Fund are budgeted at $4 million next year, which is a slight increase over what we estimate this year. If you remember, we implemented a $1 increase on passes, or the equivalent for monthly passes or annual passes, so we have seen an increase in revenue from that to help with some of our operations and maintenance in the future, but we're also seeing more visits, so we saw, we continue to see an increase of revenue do that. Sales and use taxes are also up, and we have a few other kind of smaller revenues for the community center fund overall, but $4 million is projected in 2025, and that is just a 1% increase. Unlike last year, we don't anticipate any changes to our fee structure in 2025. Revenues are doing good, and you will see when you're looking at the community center fund, we actually do have a little bit of a surplus there. We do budget things right off the top each year, so you'll see that we budget certain funds for capital equipment replacement, so some of the vehicles we have over there, we have funds to replace those in the future without having to pull from current year revenues. Also, we can fund large-scale capital projects as well with some of those, so you'll see a surplus in there currently, and that could change slightly before we go for final adoption in December. 2025 expenses, we anticipate $3.9 million in expenses, that is a decrease of 25% overall, mostly due to those one-time projects this year, the installation of the water slide, but also the renovation of the staff offices, which will continue into next year. Out of that 3.9 million, 2.8 is set aside for operations, we have about 18% or 722,000 for debt service, and then 343,000 for capital equipment, which is either equipment that we need to replace or purchase for the rec center or projects, maintenance items in the rec center as well. Overall, general highlights, personnels or personnel salaries are expected to increase 5%, along with our benefits 11%. And we do have a decrease due to the water slide and the staff renovation of the offices. And then we have 12,500 for the upgrade to the new website for the fruta.org. This is split between the general fund and the IT services and the community center fund. Capital expenses are the bulk of our non-operating expenses, so again, a lot of aquatics, pieces of equipment that we need to budget for next year. Pools are very expensive to operate and own, as you've probably heard. And we continue to fund that at quite the level for next year, and we have a lot of replacements that are due next year. So these are a lot of the highlights. We have an indoor/outdoor pool replacement, 150,000. We have a community garden, which is something that's been requested by the community at 55,000, some HVAC software at 30,000. And then a slew of other capital equipment items and also maintenance items for the next year. I can go through all these, or they were included in the budget, of course, Mark Mancusa, our Parks and Rec Director, can speak to any of these projects or equipment as well.
So just to give you a few updates on some of the equipment that we are replacing, I mean, 12 years ago, right, that the efficiency and the products have changed a lot, so the technology has definitely improved. So we're hoping to have, like, as we put these new hot water heaters in for the pools, hopefully the efficiency with what they've developed will help save on some of those utilities that we're using as well. So we're looking for the, it's amazing how much 86 degrees in the pool to 85 degrees is, and how many people will tell you, so. So we want to make sure that we stay up on that, so. And replacing some of the circulation pumps and that, like, there have been several comments about not having hot water in the showers as quickly as possible, so we're trying to address those issues with changing some of these mixing valves and circulation pumps.
For the record, I don't think I've ever complained about the pool temp. He's not wrong.
Yeah. I may have, once. And a few other capital expenses, yeah, we do have the hot water circulation pumps, elliptical replacements, we do have a few other miscellaneous fitness equipment that will replace, that will probably be included in the next budget, then some other small items overall. These are kind of just the budget highlights from the Fruta Community Center Fund. Overall, I think it's been a very successful year over at the community center fund, or at the community center, I apologize. We have attendances up, with that, as always, you know, comes a challenge, we want to make sure that we're offering a great experience for attendees, so we hope that, you know, some of these things we will do will help that experience and help visitation in the future, so even though attendance is up, and even though we continue to see more and more usage and more and more programs, we can hopefully offer something that the community values and continues to use. But yeah, I think it's been a great year, we have a brand-new facility supervisor over there at the community center as well, and I think he's had a great start, but yeah, I think it's, it's been good.
Anything to add to that, Mark?
I'm anticipating, once the water slide fully opens, that we will have increased use for that, so we're still waiting on a few of the electrical inspections to pass. We need a GFI for the light above the water slide. The water slide itself has passed and everything's ready to go, we're just waiting for that final light, so we're hoping tomorrow night during, they're coming in at 7:00 PM to work on those lights. We're hoping it's fixed, and then Thursday morning, we'll have the okay to start operating the slide, so.
Doing like a ribbon cutting or something, or is it just going to get turned off?
At this point, it might just get turned off.
Yeah, or.
Sneakily figure out.
Right, yeah.
We have, we have tested it, there's been quite a few people that have gone down just to do the testing and commissioning of that and training. Actually, Molly Beth, our aquatic supervisor, is working with American Red Cross on how to backboard somebody that gets injured on that, so we have to make sure that that's in place before we can open, and we've got to train staff prior to that, so there's a couple of important pieces that we still need to figure out, but we want to get it opened as soon as possible, so we'll let you know, and if you guys want to come down, we'll definitely let you guys go down the slide, so.
Research purposes.
Research purposes.
Yes.
The city.
Yes.
There you go. Great, I'm going to move on to Parks and Rec General Fund. First off, I apologize about all the text on this slide, I try to limit that, but when I was looking at this right before this, I noticed there was a lot, so apologize for that. Notable budget changes for next year in the 2025 budget, as you've seen, we do have some increased funding for the 25th anniversary of the Mike Pettus Chicken Festival, you'll see a pretty significant increase in entertainment for the festival next year, hoping to draw some maybe more popular bands, or maybe some additional attractions that'll help out, just to kind of celebrate 25 years of Mike. And we also have other increases throughout in supplies and equipment and special events. We also reshuffled some of those expenses to kind of better illustrate what they are, so for the fireworks, you'll see a $14,000 decrease, but some of those expenses associated with having the event are just kind of put in other line items, so you'll see like increases overall. One thing that we're also excited about is we're going to start contracting out with Citadel Security, the locking of Parks and Rec bathrooms at night. This is something that our police officers currently do, you know, in between calls or when they have time, so sometimes if it's a busy night, they may not be able to get to it, to get to some of the restrooms right at the first thing, you know, when they need to, so that could lead to, you know, some potential for mischief or vandalism, whatever it may be, so I think contracting out with Citadel will be a good addition and benefit for both our park staff as well as our police department as well, because they'll just handle the locks and one less thing that we have to worry about as we're trying to help out patrolling at night. We have seen an increase in vandalism, unfortunately, we've talked about it at length, especially at Reed Park, so we are installing some new cameras over there, so anything we can do to prevent that is helpful, for sure. Geez, more text. Fireworks display, already discussed that. You'll also see some pretty sizable decreases in miscellaneous contributions and scholarships. This year in the 2024 budget, council approved $30,000 for the murals at Mulberry Plaza, which look great, by the way, I, yeah, I walk by almost every day, and it's awesome to see the progress. So that's $30,000 less you'll see in that miscellaneous contributions line item. And then we also had a few cool programs this, this year that will take down the scholarship funds, such as the helmet program, where we partnered at Family Health West to provide helmets for youth in the community. We also had the Hot 90 Days of Summer, which provided community center passes to people who applied for them as well during the summer, so really cool programs. Also, you'll see in the budget, we have increases in maintenance, such as to replace both capital and non-capital items, such as flagpoles, picnic tables, doors, et cetera, at some of the parks throughout Fruta. Moving on to capital expenses, we have two replacements for next year, we have a wide area mower that we'll be replacing. We also have a Polaris UTV that we'll be replacing as well. And the biggest capital project, at least in general fund for parks, will be the expanding the detention pond at Little Salt Wash Park, which hopefully helps with some of the irrigation issues that we were experiencing up prior this year, so we can irrigate potentially earlier, but also more often if needed. We have a few other capital expenses included in the budget, this one is in the capital projects fund, but we are setting aside $40,000 to complete the loop around Snook's Bottom. This will, so thinking of the western side of the loop, it's kind of just like a rocky road, it's uneven, not leveled. It's not, I don't believe it's ADA compliant, so this work will actually create what you see similar on the eastern side with kind of the soft surface gravel and kind of take that all the way around, so it can be used for people of all abilities out there at Snook's Bottom. We also are accompanying this with some vegetation removal and some cleanup there as well. I believe, if we haven't already, we're applying for a grant with the Carlisle Youth Conservation Corps that'll help out with some of the vegetation removal, removing some of the debris out there that we may need to remove, so a lot of good things happening at Snook's Bottom, I know the Parks and Rec Commission also just hosted a cleanup event, so very cool to see all the things out there. And then we also have $7,500 budget for a sign for the Fruta Bark Park, that'll be similar to the signs you see at all of our other parks, the stone, very nice sign there.
I'll pause there for questions on Parks and Rec, or Mark, if there's anything you want to add?
Yeah, so on the irrigation expansion, as that sediment increases, right, as we get dirty water, the volume of water that we can hold in the pond decreases over the years, I don't know when the last time was that it was dredged out and cleaned out, but that's part of that expansion, just making sure that we have all that, as much capacity as possible, so there's a couple times during the summer, during the really hot days, that we were unable to water because of the volume, like, we sucked the pond dry, and we had to stop halfway through the run cycle because there was, it couldn't replenish quick enough, so we're hoping that that expansion, we did find a blockage under one of the sidewalks in the irrigation coming from pine. So Public Works is helping get that cleaned out. So again, trying to address the issues with the irrigation, right, that turf, you know, it dries out in a hurry, and we you know, it dries out in a hurry and we get lots of complaints because it's brown. So we're trying to address those issues in every possible way, making sure that, you know, we have that water. It's not a large pond, so we won't be able to start watering way earlier. But having water there, we could put some water on if we needed to. So.
Great. Thanks, Mark.
Irrigation was a challenge this past year. So thank you.
Yeah.
Working on trying to mitigate that as much as possible.
Irrigation is always a challenge. You never know what quality you're going to get each spring with the runoff. So yeah, our guys are definitely working hard. Their goal is to make that park look as, as best as they can. And unfortunately, they ran into every other week, something else happening. So, but they do take great pride and they want to make that a showcase facility.
I do have a couple of questions.
Of course, yeah.
One question, one comment.
Sure.
On the community garden, I do not have issue with the 55,000, but I do want to encourage as much engagement as possible. Like I do just never know who might be willing to donate all sorts of things. We may wind up not having to spend near that amount of money, even like concrete and all the things like the structure that we're talking about. I just want to make sure that we have have it out there that we're doing it before just to give people opportunity to really buy into that because it's beyond just the people who are going to be gardening and taking that piece, but really just building it all together as a community if, if possible. And then the fireworks, how diminished will our fireworks show be with the decrease in?
So this doesn't change the budget. The budget is still the same. We went out to bid this past year, last year. So we did lock in, I believe, a three-year contract. Some of the additional expenses that we pay for the fireworks show, like traffic control, the porta potties permits is just shuffled around to other expenses. But you are probably right. Each year, it seems like maybe we get less and less for our money as far as fireworks, like less being lit off, but I'll defer to Mark on if there's any noticeable changes. Yeah.
Yeah. So this was the only event that the porta potties and traffic control came out of this line item. All the other special events had a separate line item for those items. So we just moved that over. So this year, I believe that it went up $1,500 from last year. And I think each year on their contract, it goes up $1,500 for inflation. So we'll try to stick to the same shell size that we had last year. You know, just try to get to maximize, like my goal is to get as many things blowing up in the air as possible. Although I did see a drone show that was pretty awesome up in Keystone this last week. So not going there yet, but I, yeah, I, I think this company has been working with us really well, trying to get the most bang for her bucks.
Great. Thank you.
Can you just talk about, I'm just looking at like our, our fund restrictions. Can you just talk kind of high level about how we go about assigning the different amounts for the different reserves?
Yeah, that's a great question. So as with most of our funds, you'll see that we have certain restrictions within the fund balance. Some of those are self-imposed. So in our general fund, we have a operating reserve that we are required to maintain. It's 25% of our operating expenses each year. So as our operating expenses increase, you'll see that our operating reserve also increases. So theoretically, we would have the ability to operate without revenue for three months if we had to, if we didn't have any other reserves. Some are required by statute. So taxpayer bill of rights does require us to at least have a 3% reserve. We exceed that. And then some of the other requirements that you'll see in the Community Center Fund, for example, those funds can only be used for community center purposes. So when you see restricted for community center, we can't go send that off to hire, you know, someone in public works. We can't go hire someone in marketing. We have to use those funds in the community center because that was the portion, whether it was a user fee or the 1% of the 3% tax, it has to go there. We're required by law through the voter approval, we got to use it at the community center. Some of the other ones, like we also have a restriction for our loan that we have to repay. That's actually in the debt service fund, but we are required to keep our last payment in the debt service fund. So you'll see that kind of restricted for that use and that'll be in 2039. And some of the other ones, especially in the community center, the building equipment replacements, that's just money that we set aside in the future for when we do need to fund a large project. We thought we were going to tap into that when we initially funded the water slide and then also the staff renovations or the staff office renovation. But so far, revenues and expenses have been doing so well, we haven't had to decrease that yet. But yeah, there are certain restrictions, some self-imposed, but some are also imposed by, you know, Tabor voters, et cetera.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Any other questions there? All right. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our police department. So this is a great photo. Unfortunately, yeah, it's already outdated. Two weeks ago, or probably a week and a half, we celebrated Lisa DiCamillo's retirement. She was with the City of Fruta for 36 years, incredible career. And it was incredible to go and hear from all the other officers, but also some of our police department staff wishing her the best in retirement. So we were fully staffed for a week. But hopefully we'll get fully staffed again soon. Overall, for the public safety, we do have some pretty significant increases for the program next year. All expenses are increasing 12% overall compared to the prior year. We did add a new police officer position a couple of months ago. We, we that one has been assigned for community outreach and engagement, but also helps out with patrol as well. Ed Pacheco was given that position and you met him a few council meetings ago. He's been doing great. So we were able to hire someone into that existing patrol role and then promote him to that new position. So I think that's been a great addition and will continue to be a great addition for the community. As within a year, we are budgeting $140,000 for the replacement of two interceptors. We received one, you might have seen it's black. So it stands out from all the other ones. I hear it's great. It's got a full 360, you know, camera on top. So if anyone's trying to sneak up on the officer while it's idling, they'll actually be able to detect it. There's all these cool features that they've told me about. I haven't been able to drive it, of course. But I hear it's great. So hopefully we'll continue to get some more and we are still due for two more that we ordered. I think last year that will be arriving in 2025. So we're just going to keep on setting aside the funds and hope they come up. But we are still scheduled to get two next year, which will be certainly well needed as well. Other highlights, you'll see that there's some pretty significant increases for supplies and equipment. This is just replacing some obsolete technology. 20 handheld radios to be exam, to be specific. And we also have some GTAC replacement as well. We usually budget replacements each year for our police department with that. Other increases, we are increasing or we have been notified by our communication center that our contribution to the communication center will be increasing 10%. It's probably actually a little higher than that now that they have voted on that, but we'll reflect that in the final budget. You'll also see some increases in software subscriptions. A few compared to prior years, a few large ones, but there are some software that we were using to collect demographic information that used to be free, but now that it works so well, it's very popular. They can get a lot from the data. They're starting to charge for that software. So that's where you'll see some of the increases. And then also just, we always need more storage. A few years ago, there was a a law passed in Colorado that required a number of things, but now required police officers to wear body worn cameras. So we have to maintain all of that. We have to keep all that storage for a certain amount of time. So I believe that we're also increasing that to accommodate just all of the feeds and all the storage that we need to keep. Every interaction, I believe, has to be filmed according to that. And also we are increasing our starting pay for officers as well. Our officers are getting the biggest chunk of our increases next year. We're increasing each sworn officer $10,000 overall, and that'll bring our starting pay to 70,000, roughly $70,000. I was looking just today, you know, City of Grand Junction starts at $84,000 for police officers. They offer a $5,000 bonus. Dubeck is starting at 74, Mace County is at 79. Me, we, the leadership team, Mike and I especially feel like this is the right move. We've had such a great ability to retain our employees, do the nature of the job. But it's getting to the point where the gap is just too much where we need to do something like this. So yeah, I think it'll be good. And from what I've heard, the feedback seems like they're pretty excited about that change. That's it for police department. I'll stop there in case anyone has any questions.
So on the, on the storage fee for the cameras, I thought when we pick up that service, that was part of.
The Axon? Yeah.
So this is, are we getting charged more for them for storage or is this?
I think we just need more cloud-based storage, if I'm remembering correctly. Yeah. Because we, I mean, those videos too, they're probably so large. I mean, they can take up so much time if you're filming every action that every officer has. And then the app that they were, that was being used, yeah, collects every contact. You have to collect demographic information, report it to the state. This app does it automatically, automatically upload. So definitely saves our officers a lot of time being able to use this. Yeah.
Really glad to see the pay increase for the officer.
Yeah. Yeah, me too. Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments before we move on?
No, just flying right through this. This is my shortest section. So personnel, we've already talked about this at length. So I'll probably breeze through this rather quickly, but in our most recent strategic plan and our next strategic plan that will be adopted by council, it is our goal to be an employer of choice because our employees are one of our greatest assets and they continue to be the most important thing for our core service delivery. We get snow tonight. We get, I think I saw 40 inches at one point. I don't know if that's true. You know, they'll be out there in the snowplows, getting the roads ready, everything else. So definitely appreciative of all of their work. Personnel expenses are budgeted to increase 15% from the 2024 budget. 5% of that is for increases for all full-time and part-time staff. Will receive that 5% increase. The police officer pay will fluctuate between five and 15. And this year, we also saw a pretty large increase in our benefits, still less than 10% overall. But I think our health insurance was 9% and our dental insurance was 6.5%. Oh, there it is right there. We're also continuing to budget for employees that receive and exceeds expectations. They receive a one-time bonus at the beginning of the year of $1,000. And we added one new position in the 2025 budget, which is that community engagement police officer. Oh, and there's the changes right there. Dental insurance, 8% and the health insurance changed 9.5%. Last month too, council formally approved the city of Fruta moved to a new retirement provider, the Caral Retirement Association. I think this will be a great change on behalf of our employees. A lot of the feedback that we get as a leadership team was, you know, it'd be nice if we had more face-to-face contact. We'd be nice if we had, you know, someone we could reach out to with questions and someone that's local. So we think this change will be good and we think it'll kind of help them better. Not that they're not preparing, but you know, help them prepare for the future with as much help or as little as they want through moving to this new provider. So I think it'll be a good change. Employees will now be required to contribute 3% to retirement. There was no requirement currently. And then the city will continue to contribute 6% overall. Finally, I just want to touch upon other benefits that we've been working on as a staff. So although these aren't like real budget impacts, you're, they are being paid for kind of regardless. We did adopt a alternative flexible work schedule program earlier this year that has been really well received. And we also have a number of employees who are on flex schedules. So I think that's in the age of being able to recruit and kind of such a challenging labor market, it's anything we can do to kind of incentivize the employee to either come to Fruta or stay with Fruta, we should definitely not be not be dismissing. So I think this has been a good change, especially when if employees, you know, need some accommodation, need some flexibility, all they have to do is request it through their supervisor. This policy is still being worked on, but Mike and I have been discussing this for a while, but we'd like to offer some sort of parental leave next year. This is something that we already pretty much allow. It's just employees have to use their sick time for parental leave whenever they have a new child or whenever they may adopt a child. So this would be leave that would be guaranteed to them in case they don't have sick time that can be used, or they don't have vacation that can be used as well. Policy is still being worked on, but this is something that I think will also just continue to make our benefits package very competitive with some of our counterparts. And then other pay time off, no changes to that. And we don't anticipate any changes to holidays or vacation or anything like that. That's all I have for personnel. Always happy to answer any questions from the council.
Yeah. Do we, with that, I appreciate the new benefit, those change in benefits. It's great.
Thank you.
Do you, is there currently allowed for like people to give someone else their sick leave, for example, if, if they're short on it and they're a new parent?
Yeah. So actually, we don't allow sick leave to be given, but other employees can donate a vacation leave. So if someone is in need, they can request a formal donation of leave to our HR department and then our HR department can see if anyone would be interested in donating leave. We've had several instances where we may have new employees that don't have enough leave. They may have a surgery coming up. So other employees have been able to kind of step up and kind of help them. So yeah, the parental leave though, is something we're excited about and we think will just continue to make us more and more competitive overall. But a practice that's generally allowed has just never been, you can use your sick time. It's just never been kind of formalized in policy.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're saying this is, this is it of your presentation. So.
That's it. Yeah.
Other questions?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure.
It's a short one tonight.
Was rightfully placed. When do you think we'll be able to see a statement of financial position?
For?
It's the whole budget.
The whole budget. So I added the all-fund summary in the last one. We'll have kind of the fund balance updated in our next draft. So usually that's a part of it. Everything's looking really good, but we'll kind of true up some of those numbers very soon, seeing kind of see. The only fund that we're pulling from is the general fund. And that'll probably be, geez, I think it'll probably be 800,000 at the end of it. Everything else is operating. Yeah, yeah. Actually, marketing, we, yep, yep. Marketing, we might have a slight. I think we were going to add some fencing in there, but yeah, everything overall looks good. Yeah. Of course. Thank you. Oh, great. Yeah. Yeah. Of course. Yeah. Thank you.
General question, kind of looking through the budget, I'm seeing our IT costs are generally going up. Is that mostly because we're adding software? Licenses are going up or is it?
Yeah.
Are increasing?
Yeah, you know, the more users we have, some of those IT costs will go up, but we are, I think, using more software than probably ever before. So you'll see some increases there. So a great example was the, the police department increase. But when we launched our communications department just a few short years ago, that was all things that we were never, you know, kind of purchasing before, whether it was Adobe or we now have some product management.
Throw out those ones.
I didn't even think of that. That's great. Yeah. That's a great point. Yeah. We have some project management software, Asana, which has been great. But yeah, IT services overall, we're, we're using more software than before. And I think that's helping us with like streamlining a lot of the things we do. A non-communication example, so Express Bill Pay. We launched that last month. It is going great. We've already had almost 400 people sign up for paperless billing. We think that would probably go up quite a bit. But just this, today, I think we had 150 payments for those people. They didn't have to, you know, call us to get their account number. Well, they did at one point, but they didn't have to call, confirm their amount. They could just go to the website, do everything there without having, you know, to do anything. So it made it easier on them, but also makes it easier on our staff. So I think we end up spending about four grand on that this year, but just like the benefit to our staff, our utility billing has been going to be huge. And then it'll be huge in the future as well, because we'll be sending out less paper bills, less costs and less time for them. But we're using more software than ever, but also our IT are probably increasing as well. But yeah, that's a great question. Yeah.
I just want to say, keeping healthcare cost, healthcare and dental under 10%. Jealous of that. Not, I'll say that's not, that's well below I'm seeing out in the marketplace.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Seeing closer to like 16%.
Yeah.
I thought that was, health was.
Health 9.5, all benefits. And I think that's with the retirements and the reshuffling. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? All right.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I'm gonna, yeah, thank you.
All right. Since we are on, what's it called in the NFL? Concussion protocol? Yes. Since we're in concussion protocol, city managers report, Shannon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Only one thing to report, as many of you have probably seen, we are hosting the going away party for current city manager, Mike Bennett. Next Friday, it's at 169 South Mulberry from four to six. So we hope everyone can attend. And yeah, we're super excited for it. Definitely sad to see him go though, but should be, should be a great time. Food and drink will be provided and we got, hopefully this isn't on the record. We got him some very nice gifts. So should be good. That's all.
Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Spouses are with that one as well, right?
Yeah.
I can't remember.
So moving on to council reports and actions, Amy, we'll start with you.
I had historic preservation meeting yesterday. Our plaques are in. Exciting for replacing the outdated ones and then adding, we're adding two or three that, so that's cool. Stay tuned on that. The mayor and I attended the GJEP 40th anniversary celebration. That was a really great event.
Very well attended.
Very well attended. It was a packed house, literally packed house. Really cool to hear from the original founders of GJEP. The, they had, yeah, they had each of them speak and it was just kind of cool to hear like why it happened and the vision. And you know, they said that it's running better than it ever has under criticism. That was pretty cool, you know, just confidence booster.
And the frankness of what they started off and where they had successes and they had failures, I thought was.
Yeah.
Nice to them just to share all of that.
Yeah, it was really great and just neat networking opportunity always to chat and visit with all of those people. So that was cool. I did wonder if we had an update on the ditch disaster. I mean, I know.
A wash?
Yeah, the.
Yeah.
Kind of waiting until.
Yeah, absolutely.
Being like, is it, is it?
Yeah. So Family Health West did clear some, some of the debris. So it's definitely flowing much better. You actually see it. They temporarily placed it in their parking lot right across from the hospital there. So our staff has been communicating with the property owners and Family Health West on kind of needs there in the future. We're actually also going to have Mary Elizabeth Geiger, our city attorney, kind of weigh in on if there's anything, you know, the city should be looking at or anything for the city, because she is a water attorney. That is kind of her, her specialty. So she's out of the country till tomorrow, but we were going to bring her in the discussion. But yeah, as soon as the water gets drained, we'll have staff go and take a look at it and kind of evaluate what the need is. And then probably report back to council now. Our engineering, one of our engineering project managers, Steve Martinez, has been in contact with the property owners. So kind of all communication is flowing through him currently. Yeah. Thank you.
And then I did, I had a resident who reached out today about the pickleball net at the Reed Park. Mark was fantastic about responding really super quickly to me about that. There's lock on it, I guess. But Mark, I wondered, can we have like maybe some signage or something about how to access that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll work with Ciara on getting some signage out there. We didn't want to put the code out anywhere around there, but.
You know, give.
Call the Fruta Community Center for, yeah, the code to unlock. Yeah. We put the code out there once and somebody stole the lock the very first day that we had it. So we, we had to get a second lock. So yeah, hopefully with the new pickleball courts, we'll be able to. This one won't be as used as much, but so.
In the meantime, it would, because I'm sure there's been people who have gotten there and then been like, oh. Yeah, not, not able to be used. So, but I do appreciate, he seriously was just right on top of it. So thank you.
Yep.
Like in 10 minutes, set up and going and they really, really appreciated that. So.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And that's all.
All right. So the museums of Western Colorado are working on their AAM accreditation, which is the gigantic, it's a very big deal. And so far, so good on that. The amount of work and effort that Sheena has put into that to keep them able to fulfill their mission is very exciting. Hosted heritage days at the heritage farms and had 651 patrons, which was super cool. You know.
Great.
Yeah. So, and then the Fruta Arts and Culture Board and Trick or Treat Street. And that's always a way to interact with the community and gave out a bunch of Fruta coloring books, which one always goes over really well. And so I think that's about it. Really quite positive things, but community engagement for sure.
Thank you.
Rich. The tourism advisory chose a firm and directed staff to negotiate a contract with them. And Shannon can probably say where that might be and when it will be presented to the city council.
Yeah, absolutely. So the contract has been submitted to the firm. We anticipate that will probably be up for approval before the council on November 19th. At the latest, I'd probably say December 3rd. They haven't got back to us yet, but they are very excited about it, very excited about working for Fruta. And I think they're going to be great in this role. So once we have them under contract, we'll actually have them come and do a presentation to council, introduce themselves and of course, take any questions as well. But yeah, probably within the next two meetings.
Interesting to, to, as a non-voting member of that council to hear the discussion. And there were two firms that turned out to be the two contenders and it was a very difficult decision to make.
It was. Yeah.
To.
Yeah.
We also now will have vacancy on that council. And I believe the mayor and I are scheduled for some interviews in first part of December.
I don't remember third, I think.
For third, so we'll do that. I was unable to attend the all transit meeting, but was told that Kimberly substituted very well for me there. And I'm not sure what they decided on, other than I think they were working on a safety plan for that organization. That's all I have.
I get it. I will be able to attend the first, my first Fruta Youth Action Council meeting next week. So yeah, so I'll be reporting on that later. I had a question about the Express Bill Pay. The understanding was if you were already on automatic pay, you didn't have to do anything. Is that actually correct? Because I think you do have to log in and with your thing and then say that you want to auto pay once you are with Express Pay. But I'm not sure. Do you all know?
So Joe, I had to log in to enroll in paperless statements, but I didn't have to make any changes with the ACH yet. But let me, I'll double check with our utility billing staff in the morning.
Personal experience.
Oh, yeah.
I haven't done it yet either. I mean, I logged in, I made my account.
Yep.
But it has the little toggle to say auto pay and it, and I already was paying.
Yeah.
And it wasn't toggled to do so.
Oh.
So if, if, if you do have to do something, the instructions are not accurate, I don't believe.
Right. We'll.
Is that worth something in the Friday update?
And I, yeah. Yeah, I thought I would wait until the due date and see what happened. Yes, exactly. On, it's not on my account. So that's why I was wondering, should we just wait in? If, yeah, if, if, if we could find out, because at least my due date is the eighth of November. I don't know if everybody is on the same, how that works. But if everyone thinks that it's just going to happen and it doesn't, then we would, we should probably know.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I will have an answer for you in the morning.
Okay. All right. Beautiful. Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
A couple of notes. Thank you for everybody that helped make Trick or Treat Street happen. Holy cow.
Yeah.
There was a lot of people up there and a lot of people were having fun. I love the cowboy theme from everything from, I don't know, it's called hot pink cowboy to space cowboy, which was great. Just as a note, thank you, Shannon. I know we're now at terms was on consent in terms of becoming the interim city manager. I guess congratulations are also in order.
Yeah, yeah. Can I?
Thank you for that. Oh.
I was gonna, am I allowed to speak on that? I know, no, I just want to, just want to say thank you all. It is an absolute honor to work for this community. And very excited to help out throughout this transition and thank you again. I, words cannot express, you know. Yeah, thank you.
We are grateful. Looking at the recruiter, his LinkedIn post, it's interesting to kind of see. He did say we are the gold standard to go by, which is kind of nice. But also if you looked in the comments, a lot of compliments to the city staff and the entire organization that is Fruta. So which is very nice to see. And that's from other people saying it's a great place. This is a great opportunity. So that's been nice to see. Yeah, it's. All right, I could, I can do that. LinkedIn, can do. The other weird thing was, and just to bring it to attention, I did get a call this week, or no, end of last week. Somebody asking if we still had Jim Crow laws on our books, because they were at a doctor's appointment and somebody was talking about it, that they were still active. That was a lot of conversation with that individual. But I don't know who the person was who said that they were an educator and goes around visiting schools and talking about Fruta. So just I asked it, you know, if you hear of anything, I'd like to find who that person actually is so we can sit down and have a conversation and make sure that we have a common understanding of where we're at. So.
Just to add that we do not have Jim Crow.
No.
Correct. Yeah. No, no, no. I reassured the person. I actually read through the entire municipal code again, just to make sure like. Yes.
It's a pretty decent accusation.
What, did I read through the entire municipal code?
No, that.
Yes.
Pro.
Yes. And you know.
Come up every single year, like the, I've, I have it, I have the link saved like two hour. We were the first in the valley to put a proclamation out for like.
Where does it come?
It's very frustrating. We did have, we did.
And if you look, I think it's at the history of Fruta book that's out there. It, I, I haven't read the book, but I believe it's talked about in there. I don't know if that's where some of it's coming from, but I just kind of want to throw it out there in terms of if anybody hears anything. Would love to get to the source of the confusion so we can sit down and have a conversation on that.
Where does it pop up every year?
Just randomly. It'll just, yeah.
I'm grateful the person called, just to clarify that we didn't, but just so everybody's aware. And that's all I have on our council reports and actions. And then just because we're in a public meeting, we now have executive session if required on the agenda. If we have items ahead of time that we know will be an exec, it will be listed there. But that's just kind of a reminder for us that if something comes up, we can always move into executive session. If requested, yes. I'm assuming that there's no request for tonight. All right. So the time is now 8:24. We are officially adjourned. Thank you, everybody.